Alright, so calling to order the Western School Committee for Tuesday, January 28. Members present are Peter Nero, Mike Ober, Tim Killam, Lori White, Olive Angela Gofuls and myself, Larry Dunn. Ms. Lawson will not be joining us this evening. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to testify of the United States of America. It is good republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you.
The speaking.
Thank you.
Wesley Gofuls' mission: create inspiring and challenging and supportive environment where students are encouraged and assisted in reaching their highest potential.
Thank you. Alright, so our first item we have here is executive session under I know 42-46-5K, collective bargaining, WT negotiations. Chair seeks motion to move to executive session.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are back to our meeting here and there were no votes taken during executive session here. There's this motion to keep the minutes of the legislative session confidential.
So move second.
All right, all members in favor, any opposed? Dean, none. All right, thank you.
Chair, may I excuse myself?
Absolutely.
I don't think I need advice.
Thank you.
Unless you wanted to stay.
We need some entertainment.
This is part of the free.
Say all you want.
We got to track them, right? All right, so our next item we have here under new business is class privatization. So, Mr. Committee, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I had requested this just be on the agenda. I think it's time that we at least take a look at putting out an RFP to see where we stand with the buses. I mean, I shared some of my concerns, you know, the fact that there are so many open positions. They're really in compliance. I think we just need to look at the whole thing as a committee and see where we are. So I'm hoping that we'd be willing to at least put out an RFP and look at what our options are. Make a motion, put out an RFP for bus private.
I said.
The one that put you.
Yeah, we got it.
Second.
I think we had, right? So we have a motion and a second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So with that, so I guess what would be our next steps as far as?
We will work with the purchasing agent to develop that RFP and get that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now let's get back. I'm going to excuse myself out of the meeting. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Oldmacher. Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
I'm going to.
Sitting next to me.
That's nice.
Okay, so we have the 25, 26 budget work session.
So this evening we have the director, Chief Personnel, Christine Matthew, Danielle Day, her right hand is joining her. The other site budget that we'll look at is the assistant superintendent, which includes a lot of professional development and obviously some staffing. But we'll take it through there. Was there preferences to what we talked about first, Cindy?
No.
You want to set the table for Christine or just let her go?
Sure, welcome. So for people personnel, you do have the site budget, the historical data on the site budget and the FTE budget. Keep to note, the FTE budget is all staff charged to the program 20, which is special ed. So you'll see out of district transportation and preschool, which I also show separately when we go through those departments. I did have a question on the assistant director position that is not in the general fund budget, but is in our Part B budget. So I also provided, I have not submitted this to the school committee in a little while. So an updated for this year schedule of grant funded positions. Want some context around how that needed a grant or do you guys want to ask questions? I'll totally let you how you want to kind of. You won't really dress up all of it. Fun moving parts of it.
I have a couple of questions. Okay, the preschool, I don't remember that falling in this last year. Is that always the case? The pre-K is in the special ed?
Yes, I do a, it's not in the site budget, but the F2D, I've always shown everything for program 20.
How many students? And I know we get that info, but I didn't have it handy. How many students?
We have around 79 as we look at the report card, which is a little bit old data, but it's fluctuated because of kids turning three and they're qualified. It's like tomorrow we could have one more, but around 79, 80 was the last number that we saw.
Okay.
And the way our program, our preschool program is just for context is we have four dual certified special education and early childhood. They're, they have the dual certification. It's an inclusion preschool, which means 51% in peers, 49% special education students. And the kids that qualify, you know, have the access to what you see on their like on physical therapy, physical therapies of what each are. Variety, different related indirect services. So, and that's a pretty, and they run half days. You have a half day AM for mostly three-year-olds and a half day PM for the four-year-olds. Pretty similar to a lot of districts in Oregon and how they kind of run the preschool. There's a handful that have full day options, but we're pretty similar to some of the very communities.
And I know a lot of the, in your budget, a lot of these are like portions and that it's shared with other schools as well. But is there almost a full-time nurse specific or?
Yes, there's a 0.8 nurse dedicated back to preschool.
Okay, just necessary on that.
Yeah, because you know, if they're qualifying for special education at grade, they have some more significant needs probably. And there are some kids that are medically complex down there right now.
Okay.
We assess that need all the time, but it has been pretty consistent that we need that nurse down there. Obviously she wasn't coming on Fridays because we don't have them on Fridays, but she's there for the kids.
Okay. And then the other question I had was about the vacancies. The, there are two positions that are classified as new, but they're vacant. So how long have those been new? And it was a teacher and a success coach, which also was when they're.
So overall, the FTE changes, the student success coaches are, you can, Cindy, correct me too. Student success coaches aren't special education providers, but they are charged components going into them there. For next year, they had proposed bringing back student success coaches to high school because they're going to eliminate a position of a dean. So to take on some of that responsibility, but.
A retirement, I believe so.
Kids retirement that we had planned on filling.
Filling.
We actually made that determination a year ago.
Yeah. The other student success coaches for the middle school to support their school suspension to make that work. I had, last year with available funds, we had added a point four to the high school as a special education teacher. And we're proposing to continue that finisher based on student need. The real new position you'll see that we're proposing is a 1.0, I would like to add to the middle school to. IDEA requires you have a continuum of services. So we want to make sure we have a wide range of services for wide range of disabilities for a few years. Now we've been able to have one teacher meet the needs of students with more severe and profound complex disabilities as well as a wide working spectrum. At both of the ends, both at elementary and at high school, those programs have been separated out. And now we're at a point in the middle school, we have a very large bubble and it's going to, my projections for the next several years, that's going to get bigger and bigger. So I do need to separate that out to have an appropriate continuum of services. However, we're going to, we are proposing to reduce 1.0 paraprofessional. So overall, it's an change of 2.4 additional positions.
Question, are we eligible for Medicaid reimbursement?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we, Karen in my office oversees the Medicaid reimbursement and we do really, really well with that. We, and we just changed that legislation to include school psychologists. So now we're able to build from school psychologists that are, yeah, which is a great thing. All those evaluations, the time that they take to evaluate and write up students, counseling, any kind of like medical based services. If a student is Medicaid eligible, we get a portion reimbursed us. I don't know, do you have the revenue on that at this point? This thing makes quite a bit. The amount we get reimbursed increased issue.
Right, the rates did increase, so.
Could I ask a question, Cindy? Why do we carry the staffing, the FDEs under the high school for the pre-K program and not under the special ed department?
So this FTE schedule is by program. So it's program 20 for special education. So since the preschool is an inclusionary program, it's charged to program 20.
Okay. So another thing that's interesting about this is the committee will remember at the last regular meeting, I had distributed report cards for each of the schools. And it showed, you know, the grade levels being serviced that showed the number of students at State Street and Spring Brook and that number of educators and the per pupil expenditure. And we hear about per pupil expenditure at community all the time. And you saw there that at the schools, they were all in the low twenties per student. At the preschool, that same report card shows that the cost per pupil is 41,239. So I think, you know, that it's important to remember that we're talking about averages overall. So the pre-K program exists because it's a special ed initiative and we have regular rent students and they're near peers. But it's, it's an expensive model to run, but it's, it's part of our pupil personnel portfolio, I should say. I won't say that three times fast, but it's all, it's all part of that and it's, and it's expensive to make a change. If it weren't for that, we'd be providing services to those kids elsewhere though. We'd maybe someplace else we're responsible for them as of what, three?
As of three, I guess.
So that 41,239 has a significant impact on our overall district per pupil expenditure average. Could you speak, obviously in general terms, about out of district tuitions and transportation costs?
Sure. So when an IDP team makes a decision that we can't provide a student with appropriate public education here, we find a more appropriate often times with a therapeutic or specialized setting outside of here. That being said, as I was just saying about making sure that we have a wide range of continual services in-house, that part of that is to make sure that we keep as many kids here in districts as we possibly can. Our out of district numbers have steadily declined in the last three or four years. I had Sandy grabbing all the numbers and we're at the lowest we've been in probably at least five years. But you know, actually this week a student moved in that was already placed at the district. It happened. It just happened to me a couple of ways ago. But generally speaking, it is, it is an extraordinary cost because it's a very specialized program. And with that cost comes if a student needs a full-time nurse, if a student needs, obviously you provide transportation to those settings. So the transportation can cost quite a bit, especially if it's a school that we don't have a run to or we're not able to get, to have a driver to make a run to. Sometimes they need additional adult support. So those types of things add up to, you'll see on the budget, on the site budget, you'll see a variety of schools listed. Those are the schools that we currently have recently had students attend. And you'll see that the costs are significant for a small amount of students. But it's in, you know, in accordance with IDA, we provide students with an appropriate, you know, education that is not, is no cost of appearance. Which obviously if you have an education, if you have parents that transpo, it's just being a cost of appearance.
Can you speak to the difference, the vary of the differences of the tuition? Like for one student to go to Trudeau's 138,000, it's 793?
Right, that's more than one student.
But it's only once is one quantity.
What is that one quantity there? It's not. It doesn't mean a number of students. It just means the, that's the, that's. The line? The line item, right, Cindy?
Oh.
But I tell you that I have more than one. We've never, yeah, we can't put the number of students because it's such a small number that it's going to possibly identify them. So I can't say how many, but don't worry, that's not one student's tuition. So they are, I just think Trudeau, Mount Pleasant, Sargent, they're all in the same wheelhouse of, but it's a cost. You know, it's, it's not, there's not like a more economical decision or like one that's. West Bay Collaborative is a little bit less expensive. It doesn't meet the needs of the same types of kids. Like we're not going to necessarily send the same students to West Bay Collaborative, but I would necessarily send a sergeant. But generally speaking, they're all around the same amount. We just happen to have more kids over at Sargent right now.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be, that's more than, yeah, where they live, like a home boundary.
How many students are in our 18th and 21 programs?
We currently have, I think, nine in our 18th. They achieved a lot, it's 22. We have a really good transition program right now. And we're actually do have, we just, I think that's due to accident. We did have one student tuitioning in. My transition academy teacher reached out to me earlier last week and said that she's ready to consider additional referrals if you want to go that route and tuition kids in. Because she feels very confident in like meeting the needs of the kids there right now and can take some more in. So we would consider also allowing people to have some tuition if the opportunity presents itself and it's the right fit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Couple of questions. Peter, if you, if you do get a chance to go down the transition, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Check it out. It's awesome.
We had a national expert come down and tell us that we were like a great model.
Where's it located?
It's right on Union Street. It's below the Pace Center, right across from Luke McQuade's across that parking lot.
The old place.
From My Ghost to McQuade's to where I.
Yeah, so if you come out of McQuade's and you look and it's in like that turnaround with the fire department, it's a building right next to it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's at the bottom, like, oh yeah, town hall, I don't know, it's an easy reference. And I mean, they're out and about in the community. We have a ton of partnerships. We have a ton of kids that have paid employment. She individualizes every single space. They're actually young adults. The young adults go into. It's a really good program. Very, very proud of it. Trisha, Trisha Pymer's a teacher. She does an outstanding job. Doctor is great.
Two other things, I just, I know you and I have talked about in the past, but the floating nurse situation.
Yeah.
That was eliminated because of a grant fund?
It wasn't grant funded, but she, I think she was part of, with a portion of her general budget and a portion of her grant from last year.
Esther.
It might have been partially Esther, partially general. It was, it was removed last year due to budget and the end of the Esther grant. We had, so we had hired a floater nurse. We had some kids with medical needs at the transition academy and we were also having a very difficult time getting some of that coverage. So our solution was to have a floater nurse who would cover the vacancies that the nurses might have left on a day-to-day. And anytime where she wasn't covering that, she was at transition academy, which allowed for students with some significant needs that might need like emergency medication that only she can administer to go far around to the community, have more opportunities for paid employment and community involvement because a nurse was with the student who was able to administer those meds. You're able to kind of push it out a little bit farther for the students that were there. But that, that did get eliminated last year with budget cuts.
Obviously never trying to push to increase the budget, but I will tell you that that position was really one that was important and I would love to see that one back again. I mean, she was great to have that person. And the other thing, can you just explain assistant director, how that all works?
All right, so the role has changed over time. I actually held the position originally. It had not been in the position for quite some time in Western Lady. They brought it back in 2020. And at that time, we, the district had reorganized the kind of the core special coordinator structure. At the same time, we were also disproportionate. And when you, and that means that you have a certain population of students that are overrepresented either as identified or identified in eligibility. So at the time, we were disproportionate in one area. And when that happens, you have to dedicate a portion of your funds that IDA Part B gives us. we were disproportionate in one area. And when that happens, you have to dedicate a portion of your funds that um IDA Part B gives us to prevention. And so we um used that money to hire an MTSS coordinator. So the MTSS coordinator helped us with our structures and systems to respond early and fast. That gives us a far better way to um accurately identify students with disabilities, especially in the area of specific learning disability, which is where we were disproportionate. So we hired somebody um and she, um, we hired somebody, they left, we hired, then we hired Kaylee Harrison, who is now my assistant director. She is outstanding. She's a former school psychologist. She's got a wealth of knowledge. She fills the gaps that I have. I think we're, we work really well together. Um, and we really wanted to leverage her expertise. And we were no longer disproportionate. Her, so she was funded through the grant, through the MTSS, the MTSS coordinator. So what I did was I funded her, I just continued having her in the grant and changed the type of assistant director, posted it, um, and she has taken on more responsibility. Um, and is compensated as such, but she's she's outstanding. She just has changed those structures and frameworks here in a very significant way.
That reorganization and and the uh creation of the assistant director position was as a result of that futures report.
Okay, that's quite a bit.
For um a a a program audit of our special education programming. And that was one of its strong recommendations, but the job has grown beyond that, past the one person.
Yeah, it's just, and it um, what it does allow us to do is to be more compliant. So, you know, your hope is that you're investing in preventative um structures to better meet the needs of the kids and have a more compliant and effective office, which should lower costs in other areas. So that's, you know, there should be some give and take there and I and um we've developed a lot of professional development together. Um, we're working how we rate IDPs, how we do progress monitoring, how we're reporting, communicating the families. All that work is because of how somebody supports that work. Um, and it's nice when you have somebody with a different background than you because it makes it much better to you.
I mean, it's it's definitely shown, um, just your director number five, since I've had kids in the district.
Definitely for Sandy.
And, you know, it's it's definitely shown like with the assistant director. I mean, I just know like five oh fours and whatnot, everything seems to be much more in compliance. It's having two people on the team has has made a huge difference. Um, I have one other question, but I don't think it's for you. It's the parent liaison one. Is that supposed to be?
Steve, I can see that.
I I just, I I can, I asked Cindy briefly today. I guess I was just trying to understand why Dunz is at point six three, but the other two are at point four eight. And I guess understanding that they're all have the same role, is that what it is? Because, I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm in year four at Dunz and until I asked the show, I didn't even know there was one there. That's my bad. I it just, we had students at State Street. It seems like the parent liaison was always like a front and center type of person. So I just, I didn't, I was just trying to understand that a little more.
So we use, so when Tower Street closed, uh, we dumped corners to go into the positive community outreach grant.
Okay.
So that afforded Dunz to have a parent liaison.
Okay.
Um, and the parent liaisons are funded by Title One at the other two schools.
Okay.
That's why we're now still planting.
Got it.
Okay. And general question about the, these um grant says budgeted salary, but it's it's not in our budget. This is in addition to our budget.
Correct.
In addition to. And then I have one other question for for this, about special ed. Can you speak just a few things that large percentage increases is kind of what catches my eye on um on the proposed or the historical budget that we have? Can you just speak to the couple of ones that there's one that was like a eighty nine percent increase on the physical therapist, which I'm not saying we don't, I'm just
Oh, yeah, no, I can easily explain that one.
Thanks.
Um, so we were very fortunate for a long time. We had one physical therapist who worked on his own. He he was his own LSA. Um, and he never charged us with the probably the going rate was the rest of the physical therapists out there. He has since retired. We had to go out to bid. Um, and the the person, the company that won the bid is far more in line with what other other physical therapists are charging. So we use community therapies. We subcontract them um for actually our occupational therapy as well. And um then they brought us a physical therapist and a physical therapist assistant. So they needed a kid with that related service in their IDP. So unfortunately, it was a fun of those things that we had a good thing going for a long time and and he retired.
Okay.
Although you'll see him down at Transition Academy because now he's there all the time. He's always helping. He's not working, he retired. Yeah, he's sort of retired. He stopped, he stopped writing PT goals, but he's still around. But yeah, that's that's the reason it was an extraordinary increase.
And then just for like my mindset, this might be more for Cindy. So this eighty nine, is it eighty nine or ninety six thousand is on this historical budget, but then that position is going to be sectioned out per site for the schools as well? Is that how?
So they're a contract service, so it's it's different.
Okay.
They mean all, they're not part of the WTA like collective bargaining agreement. They're a, they're a subcontracted con- service for us.
Okay.
We're unfortunate that we have the same people forever. So they feel like they've been a part of us after decades, some of them. Um, but yeah, they're they're, it's different because it's, but it doesn't go into our per pupil, it's going into our per pupil or no?
No, so in the, in the overall per pupil, yes.
Okay.
So the contract services that are for special ed are not required by UCO or to be broken out by school location.
Okay, so they're not.
Where those other specific staffs such as teachers and paraprofessionals are.
Okay, gotcha. Um, and then just curious, the testing supplies, is that just a cost went up? There's nothing you can do with thirty five percent increase? Thirty four percent?
I'm just gonna, I want to make sure I'm speaking fairly on it. We um we ended up, so we we using a different system now. It's still Pearson. They own most of everything. Um, they own most of the evaluations that we use for eligibility and the evaluations. Um, we did go to a digital platform, which should be, I I actually did some cost savings in the end because they offer discounts on protocols, they offer discounts on kits. Um, they send us free paper when we need it, the free paper books, um, those are protocols. Um, and it's a online subscription that that, which eases the digital administration, makes it much easier for evaluators. Um, so it is just an increase in the cost of some of those tests and stuff. But over time, I think that you'll see there's less change because it's, we have access to so many more evaluations with the system. More of like a subscription instead of being like, oh, we're adding this kid, we need this expert and kind of piece me all together. It's a much um more consistent way to approach special ed evaluations.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the grant funded, not is it true this part, the idea Part B positions. Is that an ongoing sort of um in perpetuity type of thing? I mean, that's not a grant that at the time let it touch to it.
Yeah, so those, that grant is awarded yearly. It's it's always, you know, opposite of the plan, it's always been awarded yearly. Um, we, you know, the expense fluctuations, same amount that we've been awarded, so we always revisit student need. Um, you know, there's paraprofessionals that are in, we always make sure that those, we need that many paraprofessionals. Um, we, I played with a couple of different positions in the past and meet some of that needs and we'll make adjustments as we go. But that that is awarded annually.
And then this is just a rookie question, but um NA for FTE, what is that? Is that because it's not a position in and of itself? Because it's, it's like moving around personnel that are already
Right, so it could be like a summer program and they're going to work maybe forty hours the whole summer.
Got it, okay.
We don't assign FTE.
Any other questions and anything? Well, it's the, compared with the PT and OT company, you know, it's it's longer than two years now, isn't it?
We were able to do
We, it's actually three, but we can continue for an additional two.
Okay.
Per like after the third year, we'd be going for um after the fourth year, if we choose to, we'd continue with the
Two of them.
Good consistency.
Yeah, I think consistency is important.
Huge.
For the kids and for the families. It's just you, you want to make familiar with your leadership providers. They're providing kind of functional skills that are really, really important to students, so consistency is huge.
I guess I'll ask the hard question I want to ask you, but
Okay.
What or do we have any kind of like contingency plan on the background if Title One ends up going away or I I I know.
Well, he's kind of fine, but if IDA goes away, no, I don't currently help you.
Yeah, I'm a little like terrified, right? I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, today's a little um, not surprising, but yarring, but um, no, I
I mean, this is a big number that we're looking at here and it's like, where does this bill?
We end up at the majority judgment and very blocked the administration freeze.
Okay.
Last few minutes.
Okay, good.
Nice. Yeah, I think we're going to find a lot of things worried about will be in four for months, eight years.
Yeah.
Now, yeah. Enough time to give us time to prepare and think about it. Breathe a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, you do, we should have big concerns, but we shouldn't be overly worried about it. And we should talk about it as things progress.
Yep, absolutely. This is, like I said, you're looking at a big number here. What's the bottom line? It's like
Is there, I I remember at an earlier meeting, something about if the effort, what is it? The maintenance of effort is not able to be met because of funding that is no longer available, that the town is then responsible for filling that gap in fact. If if idea went away, if Title One, if if some of these grant funds went away, would not the town of Westerly then be responsible for
Technically, yes.
Filling that gap in where you
Well, exactly. If it's a grant fund and I don't care what it is, okay, unless it's something like a three year pilot grant or something like that.
Yeah.
Um, the grant funding and it goes away, then the town would be responsible for that. But that doesn't mean that we would not get, you know, it's not like, you know, an easy, like, you know, I gone through this once in my my career, they would be responsible, but um you got to understand this is hitting a whole bunch of red and blue states. You know, red states too, and people are going to start to say, wait a minute, wait a minute, time over, you know, there's certain programs that, you know, we need to do despite the fact that one wants to go to a merit system because certainly kids have one with disabilities and whatnot. And I know I had one myself with, I don't know, either health reasons, but so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great job.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Better measure you up to Rudy from last
I, that's why I was like, really. He was very articulate and not want to go after you.
Now you're made.
So, might take over here. So I have uh basically four buckets essentially. So there's the out of district uh budget categories, which is mostly uh tuitions for students that are going to charter schools or to other referring technical centers such as Charon over NK. Uh, you know, part of our work, when you think back to that, I'm going to go back to that December presentation. The great spots and gaps to close, you know, part of the work is when we build our strategic plan, part of it is how do we get those kids to want to stay here now, so to reduce these numbers. So that's part of the work that will be coming out of my office um with our administration and leadership team around instruction and so forth. And the other bucket is the curriculum staffing, which is uh salaries for uh various positions that fall under main. Uh, some of them are kind of actual, the district department heads. Uh, then you can see a portion of the ELA, MLL, and meaning STEM coordinators, which parts, part of their salary is also funded in to the grants as well. So they're they're kind of like pieced out positions. The third bucket would be staff development, which uh incorporates the different professional development opportunities. Um, especially the science, the GEMZAC trainings, we're piloting open SAEED in middle school. And we're exploring those materials at the high school, which is, I mean, which is per legislation, the adoption date is June of two twenty twenty five, so we have to follow that process. We have a HQIM science committee that is facilitating that work. So and it's a very big shift in how teachers go from direct, like teaching a concept to now kids essentially discovering uh discovering the concept themselves, which is pretty interesting. I actually co-taught a lesson yesterday in sixth grade. Uh, and then some of it's also just mandatory, like SOS training for suicide prevention, science reading, training, legislation, uh et cetera. Uh, safety care, first, you know, paraprofessionals and certified teaching and administrators in the event that a student is is unable to be deftly escalated and needs physical inter- intervention. Uh, and then the fourth is uh like the curriculum budget, which again is uh supporting materials such as the pilot materials. If we're exploring a specific curriculum, um we need to be able to, and we work out deals, like whether it's a rental or purchase agreement. Um, and then different mileage and travel expenses um and so forth. So those are the four buckets. So any questions?
Does homeschooling, like just as a general, cost us anything? Would that be under your budget?
We just have to provide curriculum materials. So, and they're usually materials that already have within the district. So I would know if there's an actual cost associated beyond that.
Yeah, we do have the line in out of district, the last line for textbooks. Out of district.
Oh, out of district, okay. There are indirect costs that they have in IDP. If you were home, if you, um, Alexa, having child go home school, we do sell the option of receiving your IED services.
Okay.
There's really indirects co- costs related to that, you know, specialty
The last, the, what I'm learning in this role is there's a lot of businesses to the Penn Foster program and they give that and those, like Penn Foster uh offers the families a like a a payment system, a monthly payment system that they can, uh like the algebra on their home.
Yeah.
So if we have students that go to um say Bishop Henrigan or St. LaSalle Academy, we require to provide them with textbooks, yeah?
No, because that's private.
We do some
I think because I know we
Rent.
Yeah.
Private, yeah, we sell.
Yeah.
Because I was going to say, because, you know, I have people I sell baby oil and Bishop Henrigan, so I'm, you know.
Do we have to pay for their books?
On Bishop Henrigan.
Providing textbooks, yeah.
Yeah.
Not all of them, just the general. They have textbooks.
Okay.
Well, that was a murky question for me.
I only learned that about two hours before this meeting started. My neighbor just came to the front door and asked for a book for Proud, so I literally just learned that two hours ago. So I had to answer.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other presentations?
Excuse me, no.
You got one, right?
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, okay, so maybe anything? We got a little uh so when these don't go too long, I feel we're missing something, but we can always come back. And we can always, we need a recorded uh meeting, so if you have questions, please leave it on for me. Obviously, we, we can always go back to another problem. And
So I guess I did want to just, um, Steve, just quickly. Steve uh mentioned, you know, um our efforts to curtail kids leaving us and us paying out of district um tuitions and that. And that applies to vocational programs as well. So we have made headway in terms of fewer kids leaving us to go to the district in the north for their vocational program. There are a lot of things that go into those decisions though. And so if a kid is is on the fence about, for example, where to attend a culinary program, it may be the band program in Westerly or the athletics program or the AP courses that we offer or a lot of other factors that is the deciding factor to make that kid stay here. So it's not just, you know, the programs, it's it's, we want Bulldogs for life, right? We want to keep them here in town. And there are a lot of things that go into those decisions. This is about the culture we create as well. Kids don't want to read their friends or leave this environment because they 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 glee too. That's what we want, so that they're not making the choice to go elsewhere. So there's a lot of factors to be considered. And this one is
So the student center would appreciate it. Whenever Henrigan played Princeton and Western football, we'd get phone calls because the kids wanted to go get out of Henrigan to come to Princeton West to play in the band because they would knock their socks off. It was a big draw, so.
Whatever it takes.
Yeah.
Whatever it takes to sink like poke into a kid, that's what we're going to have, so. Those things are is, are important as well. The other thing, um, we're not there yet, but it's something that we 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 have to consider and we think about is when staffing reductions if, for example, uh, we said in a particular department um due to declining enrollment, we could, we could reduce by one, one and a half, maybe two teachers. What we have to sometimes think about is is the the ripple effect, that the trickle down effect is more more like it. Um, sometimes I'll just say it, sometimes our very best, most effective and dynamic teachers have very little signori. And we try to be strategic about if we were to close out a position in a department, um, who is it that actually goes out? And we try to be strategic about if we were to close out a position in a department, um, who is it that actually goes out the door? So it's just, it's something to consider there. Um, I mean, for example, if we're trying to build a music program at the high school. We built a music program at the high school by having a strong music program in the middle school. If, for whatever reason, we as a, as a, as a group decided to eliminate a music position. The hotshot band director that is doing a terrific job at the middle school would be the one that goes. So then you say, geez, the saddle, is this the year to do that? Do we wanna do something else? So these are just considerations that we'll have to have conversations about over the, the next month or so. And we have those kind of conditions in a lot of departments. So again, if, if just through attrition, through retirement, so those kinds of things, people uh left us. And, and the numbers pounced out, that'd be wonderful, but it's not that easy, it's not that clean.
I had a couple of questions on the out of district, uh, just, can, for the CTE programs, like. Why would someone go to Foster Glass? Does, does it have to be something that we don't offer, or can they just say, I wanna go here?
There's a, a lot of debate about that and they'll, they'll, they'll look at what's called significantly similar programs. Um, and if, if there's an, the exact same program in a district, generally students will be required to stay. But if there are programs that are offered elsewhere and that we don't have, we, we have no, we have no say.
And then why, why, why do we pay CCRI for that jump, that start, that jump ahead program? The running start program for the college credit?
That's, basically that's because that's, that's what it is, is, is they're enrolled in college. It's a jumpstart on the CCI education. And the alternative there is, we, we have kids who are sitting in classes they don't wanna be in as seniors. Uh, because they've met all the credits or they've just had it with the high school experience, so we get them on their way and we do pay for them to attend CCI. So running start program to get them out there and get them into college. Well, interesting, you know, again, we're, we're about trying to provide opportunities. We can't provide every opportunity to every kid.
Right.
Because sometimes money is, is the deciding factor.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Are we moving the calendar next week? You have a school meeting on Wednesday, correct? Is there a budget meeting also next week?
When you get this last time we were here?
Yeah, I know, but somewhere along the line I wrote, I, I can't remember one too. Um, so there's none, but there is open house next week, five to seven at what, the high school, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I wanna make sure that I.
State Street Monday, um, for the bean.
It's like, what, eleven?
Eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
And at the regular school committee meeting next Wednesday, we will have budget presentations for the high school, preschool, CTE and the middle school.
Oh, really?
Oh, really?
Yes, we, we've done that in prior years where there's, there's not quite enough budget meetings, so we won't. That's why there's always budget on the regular agenda.
Which one, Cindy? Like high school?
High school, preschool, CTE.
And the middle school.
Anything else? Yeah, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we can motion back.